I'd like to call a meeting to order. Would I have a roll call, please?
Hard.
It may mess you up.
No worries. All right. Okay, Brian Herring, President. Mary Jean Krieger, President. Mitch Magnus, President. Johnny Savage, President. Brian Oswald, President. Bill Boswell, President. Joel Williams, President. Deana Taylor, President.
Thank you. This time I would ask you to please stand and Mr. Brian Herring will lead us in our prayer and remain standing for our pledge.
Heavenly Father, we are so honored to be a part of this great city and be able to be in the day and the in and out businesses and the dealings with this great city. But we pray that you'd guide our minds and our hearts as we do this business. In your name we pray, amen.
I pray to you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, they are.
Did it go down? Y'all alright over there?
Am I still on?
Yeah. Okay, if y'all had a chance to look at your minutes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Remove that we accept the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
I'm second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from the previous meeting. End the discussion. All those in favor, by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, if you'll notice on your agenda, we had, we put a little item in there, but we'll have to wait for 3:30.
Sixty minutes.
I mean, excuse me. 6:30 to go into recess and we will not be able to do our ordinance until we have that meeting. So, we might go through this meeting here and have a long recess, I don't know. But anyway, let's get into department reports. I think we, Wade, you had something that you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I'm gonna breathe. Just wanted to give you an update on fluoride. I think I visited with you about a month or two ago on it. They are, the equipment's pretty well installed at Carroll Boone. They're testing it. And they tell me probably within the next two, three weeks, they will be fluoridated water. I know there's a lot of concern from some people as far as the safety of that. They'll always get that concern. One thing that I want to point out, and I'm gonna try and put a little bit of information out on the internet about, my main concern would be the use of fluoridated water in baby formula. So, kinda wanted to pass this along to you guys in case anybody was talking to you. For infants one year and under, it's not a good idea to exclusively use fluoridated water to make baby formula. It does increase the risk for dental fluorisis, I think is the correct pronunciation, which is, basically, it's a cosmetic condition for teeth as they get older. It's just something that kids are at a risk for if they get too much fluoride in them. And when you're talking about babies with such a small body weight. The CDC does recommend that you don't exclusively use fluoridated water to make infant formula. The only other item that I did want to pass along was our total cost so far for snow and ice removal. Let's see, total material costs, which includes fuel, salt, gravel, also includes our equipment repairs that we go through, was at just over $33,400. The total labor involved is, that includes regular and overtime, we're sitting at just over $25,200. So, that's a total of around $58,720 in cost for snow and ice removal so far this year. Just kinda want to give you an idea of the cost that we have to afford as a city in order to get the roads clear.
I'd like to talk about the last year one.
We're under last year. We, last year, we used a lot more salt and gravel. So, but, you know, that's, that's still quite a bit. You know, really, we've had three events, but a couple of them had pretty good amount of ice. And the more ice we have, the more salt and gravel that we use. And the salt's really the biggest expense from a material standpoint. We used about $24,500 worth of salt so far this year.
Are we still able to do the fluoride that we discussed?
Yes. Yeah, what we do, we, we do our contract back in the summer, we make our initial purchase, and that contract's good for a year. We have, we've done a couple reorders under that contract just to make sure we've got enough on hand in case we get something really bad. And we are gonna make sure that our bid is full. You know, once, we're pretty sure we're not gonna get any more, but at some point, we'll make sure it's full once we get into spring, that way, because we do have a pretty good price this year for salt. It could go up next year, so we're gonna get it loaded up as much as we can right now and be ready for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Is anybody else in department structure that you didn't say?
That's on my list.
Okay, we can get into committee reports, community environment. Go report. Wait a minute. Mary Jean.
Now, we did have a meeting for petrol care. And we had four members present, one was absent. But we had, special guest was Mayor Cheryl and Ellen Rogers, who's representative of the Wells Park Gala last year, Chris McNew. And there was approximately eight ladies from the 20th century left present. And it went very well for our first time. I looked good in the mayor's chair.
And Luke, I wonder if you've had any response from the Arkansas Cemetery Board?
I just got one yesterday. We had to fill out a report, and then there is a fee, our annual report fee and another fee, filing fee that is required. However, we have asked that they waive that, and they don't have an actual board meeting for the Arkansas Cemetery's Board until next, it's gotta be the 19th, they said. So, they were gonna take it at that point in time. To them, we are a one-of-a-kind type venture. In the instance, we're the only municipality-owned cemetery fund in Arkansas. And so, they kinda take ours as a case-by-case basis. And we, when we requested that they remove any kind of fees, they said it's likely, but they didn't know for sure. And we had to file an annual report with them as well. Nothing out of the ordinary. It's just our first time filing because we have never had to go through the Arkansas Cemetery's Board until last year.
I was just wondering, have you got any response?
Hey, we'll go into finance. Magnus.
Okay, the only thing we had is water sewer, found audits. And I'll let Luke speak to that, I discussed it with him briefly. Between you all had a chance to look over, the primary thing is we got a clean opinion. There were some comments about segregation duties and some other things, and Luke's addressing those. And then the management comment letter is the next thing that you might want to look at.
Okay, I'll just start by saying, these financial statements look totally different from what you received from me. We do ours, the expenses are roughly the same. However, you'll notice that big depreciation expense line item. And you'll also notice that the income we get from infrastructure is in there, but the expenses for infrastructure items are not. All of those are capitalized and put in as fixed assets in the audit, whereas you see them as expenses, and you see more of a cash line item or a cash basis financial statement from myself. I do that to kinda be consistent and also to show real expenses. I say real because depreciation is an expense for tax purposes, but we don't necessarily get that tax benefit. So, I show that to you at a different, different level, and so that way you can see what we have in cash reserves. So, that's the first thing, and that's why you see the increase in revenues over expenditures is $2 million. Only that doesn't happen. We didn't make $2 million last year, but that's why you see that big number. Everything else is pretty standard. Like you had mentioned, we did have a few segregation duties issues. I talked to the mayor about potentially taking a portion of one of those bank reconciliations on, just to kinda help me out and hopefully alleviate some of those issues. Another one would be monthly reconciliation for closing procedures. We have updated some of our procedures to make sure those are happening, and I'm signing off on them now. They were happening, they just weren't being signed off on in the past, but we are signing off on journal entries now, bank reconciliations, stuff like that. That was at the recommendation of the auditors. Even though I was looking over, they just wanted to have that kinda stamp on there that shows dates. Another thing that we, we're gonna start reconciling on a monthly basis is our inventory and our fuel. We had a system before this past year that we would get the tickets, but then we might be a month behind whenever we got those tickets. But now, it's automated. We use a system called iWork with them. Is it iWork or iWorks?
iWork.
iWork. But it's all automated now. I mean, we get to print out, nothing's changed. It monitors all the vehicles and everything else, I believe, on the fuel end of it. If they do any repairs, they mark it to a vehicle number, so that is actually being sent to us monthly. That's helping alleviate that part of it. And the lovely segregation of duties to information technology, that's another one that's, it's hard to get rid of until we just have a big ultimate plan of, one, what we're gonna do if something ever crashes, which we have off-site backups, but also, they almost are recommending an IT person on staff. And I don't know that that's necessary, but we have, we have someone on call, basically. They, they do come. Sometimes it's on-call later than others, but that is the, that is in there. Didn't want you to be aware of that. We also have a few other management comments that I get internally, I guess you would say. And I don't know that those are in your actual.
You talking about where it talks about the cash findings and the, like the outstanding totaling checks?
Yep.
If I'll just proceed here a little bit, you know, every year, we get these segregation duties on not only our outside audit on water and sewer, but also on the legislative audit. We get almost the same things all the time. And we have for as far back as I can remember, which is not very far, but 99 anyway. The main thing is, is the reconciliation of our bank deposits. That's the main issue. And who can, who can cover those? Well, it has to be an administrator. Administrator can only sign off on those records. And Luke being an administrator, but he is also the director of the finances, and they think it needs to be somebody else, right?
Basically, I have the ability to do whatever I want. It's what it boils down to. I mean, in not saying that I am, but I would never do that. But that's why they put that in there. I can go back and update information, I can create information. Yes, we had two signatures on our checks, but as anybody knows, and the banks wouldn't want me saying this out loud, but if you write a $5 check and you sign it Mickey Mouse, they're usually not gonna look at it. So, it's, it's stuff like that that you just, that's what they're trying to make everybody aware of.
But he's, he's in the process of checking with our auditors. If I can sign off on it, it's probably, it's never been done actually by maybe a mayor, but I am considered a member. But will it take a lot of my time? Yeah, it probably will take a lot of my time. I told him I would do it if it would, it would help us, our city, help our auditing department and everything. But, we don't even know that yet, so if it, if it doesn't help, I'm not gonna do it. But if it does help, I will do it.
What's the alternative? I understand.
We'll just keep biting the bullet on this. We'll just keep biting.
Ultimately, you hire another person to just.
Right. I started saying it's an oversight issue because of staffing, you have limited number of people on a position. But the school system has the same issue. The county's gonna have the same issue. Anytime you're talking about smaller organization, I'm gonna have that issue. Especially the governmental.
Cause, cause back.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I totally understand it. I know what kind of, how they do it is. At the same time, it's not only Luke doing it, it also takes the pressure off Luke if something is wrong or something. It protects him as well because it justifies what he does.
Well, review a simple check, images or reconciliation of the balance, you know, actual oversight, not, not take the mayor as long. I would be opposed to him doing that on a regular basis because then he's into the mess in both every day.
That's what I mean. I really don't wanna do it. And maybe it won't do anything anyway if I do do it.
Yeah, we, we. In-house, though, is there a solution?
No. The biggest key is, would be for him to actually be the one to open up the bank statements that come in. And believe it or not, people alter bank statements and just a great problem.
Now, if you could, you could outsource the reconciliation process to.
Yeah, that should be a sort of.
Right.
So, we can.
We create another question. We create another demand.
And the mayor's been looking over all the checks that we send out to, so if he did cross, kinda keep that in the back of his mind when he's looking at check images, it would help to say, oh, I don't remember seeing this one. What's this about, Luke? That's really.
Again, every municipality, like I say, the school gets it every year, and I've talked with them about it, and theirs can be resolved by two different staff members calling an email. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury here. You can go ahead and.
Well, not in an administrative.
In an administrative.
Right. That's the key right there.
Mitch, I have a question, just 'cause I've, I've looked over it and saw some things I'd like to ask questions about. Will this be brought into committee just to kinda go over, so we all have a basic understanding?
We can.
I think it would be just helpful because I don't think everybody's had a chance. I noticed it showed up today, and when I went and looked at everything.
The problem is, you get into this and it causes an hour or two long discussion, and I'd, we'd ask some questions, like I've got 10 questions here. I'm not gonna ask, you know, that many questions.
Exactly. And for me, just getting in committee would just help us all have the same understanding of it, that we're out there, you know, just, there just some stuff that stands off right off the page, without a doubt.
We'll do that this way later.
I think that would be more helpful.
Okay, we'll, if, somebody make a motion table committee.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to table committee. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Well, that's right to give, and I'm glad you're here. All of, all those in the favor, by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
That's a good thing.
That's a motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, internal affairs.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no report. However, kinda thinking out loud, the weather seems to be calling. The barbecue is still on the table. Wade has already shopped in numbers as far as how many we're gonna feed. Looks like we've got 22, is that right, Wade?
You're right. Did you take, did you put this in? Is that 22?
No, but we'll, we'll figure between 30 and 35. I don't have a date yet. I need to kinda give it away and see if it works, probably on a Friday, I'm thinking at the end of the week. And I know the guys work Sager chips, depending on what time, or go to lunch at Sager times. So, I'm thinking we set it up, we'll cook right over in the shop area where they can, they don't have to come anywhere, we'll go to them. Van was kind enough, I think our best provided the grill. He just took care of the sodas.
Do you have a date on that?
No, I don't. And, you know, last time I mentioned it, the next time the guy was six inches of snow, so I don't recall mentioning too much.
Be careful about blaze, or you gonna do it down public work?
I think we'll do it, yeah, down public work.
Are this, are they?
Excellent. Mitch and I both heard the same thing, no. And again, the guys need, and gals need to hear this, that best, best I've ever seen since I lived in Harrison on road clean. I know I saw them by my house around the clock, 24/7. It's easy, people that drive would complain when a road crew doesn't go by their house, but when they're out there working around it, you see them all days, all time base, not moving snow, yeah, job well done, in my book, you know. Especially that second snow we got, because it warmed up and the roads were down to pavement the next day. So, it wouldn't have been that way had they not been out there working it, so. Anyway, that's, that's kind of out of internal affairs, but.
Okay.
I talked to my, I talked to my internal stomach, and I know it will there too, so.
Okay, is that all you have, Ben? That's all I have. Okay. Public safety.
Paul's gonna give us a report on our dog and our placement.
Our dog. The officer leaves on the 23rd, actually, he'll leave on the 22nd, so I'll drive about 14 hours to get to the facility. His vehicle is ready to go mechanically. We'll go down Monday to get a transport unit put in for the dog's safety and some electronics to keep the dog safe. One is, we'll have a monitor, if it gets too hot in the back, it will automatically roll down the windows. So, for the little bit of money we'll spend, it's gonna be well worth it for that, so we're, we'll be ready to go for the dog as far as the wind goes.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I've had about over 15 calls in the last two months on the funeral services. Are you gonna get back to me?
We are, we are doing them. It's just, right now, I have 10 officers under a year of employment. I have five in field training right now, so it's just a matter of manpower, but we, we still do the funeral escorts, just if we have a call that comes up, we have to handle the call first. But yes, we are still doing them. We have.
Some of them are pretty big ones, and there was no way to there.
Yes. It's just, it's a manpower thing. If we are available, we will do them.
Do you have anything you want to enlighten us with?
On the, on the truck?
Yes.
The contract, we've got the contract back from Regent, and I believe it's in the attorney's hands.
We can look over, Van and I discussed, and they did shoot me back with one other update. They updated the closing costs. They didn't have that right at first, it was 500, but we had them change it to 325, that was in the contract. And other than that, it's just, I better go sign it tomorrow, so.
That's all right with that. For genetic delivery? They, they were saying 10 to 11 months after they start building, so they haven't started yet. So, I'm, I'm, I'm looking right there.
January, February, before we get started on that. Anything else?
That is, that is.
Thank you.
We're gonna get into public works of transportation. We have, we have a lot of moments to begin.
You wanna go ahead and talk about that?
At our last committee meeting, we presented the bids for 2015 comprehensive leak survey. Recommendation was to award the contract to Utility Services Associates in the amount bid of $27,637.50, that equates to $184.25 per mile of pipe survey. We handed out the, some information with that, if anybody had any questions, and we will answer those regarding the RFP that was put out or the proposal that was received.
Well, that being said, we all talked about that in our last meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to set that bid.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? That being said, all of the labor.
I figure it would probably be like spring, early summer. I've talked to them a little bit as far as what we might do scheduling wise, assuming that it was approved, I'll get on the phone with them again tomorrow. It'll just, it'll depend on, they've got a crew working in Rustville right now. If we can time it out to where they, move them up here, that would be good, that might get us going early spring. But I would expect somewhere in May, June.
They don't foresee any interruption in any services while doing the survey, is that?
No.
Okay. That's all.
Any further discussion? All of the favor, by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Anything else of public works? Resources and policy.
I believe mine is for the public.
Okay, we're going into ordinance, and at this time, we'll, we will have to, we'll have to recess and go into a public hearing. And that being said, we have about four minutes. Brian, I probably will wait late until after we have our public hearing, and I'm sorry, but I want you to have plenty of time. I don't wanna interrupt you right in the middle.
What's happening with Willie?
I know, but.
Well, I just came home from Fayetteville today, so it's been Monday.
Okay. But I'll entertain a motion for recess at this time. I have a motion, and I have a second. All of the favor going into recess, by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. We're going to recess in the hearing. Two minutes or three minutes, we will have a public hearing. I will call the council back to order then. Okay, we will now go into the ordinance and resolution part.
This ordinance will only require one reading, one vote, and then we'll need to adopt the ordinance and adopt the emergency clause, which can be done in either one vote or two votes at that time. So, a motion, put it on this reading.
I'll make it, we put this ordinance on first and only reading by title only. Can I have a second? We will go into discussion. There being no discussion, I will call Roe, please.
Bill Boswell.
Yes.
Joel Williams.
Yes.
Deana Taylor.
Yes.
Brian Herring.
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Yes.
Johnny Oswald.
Aren't you? Reading too fast there.
Johnny Savage.
Yes.
Brian Oswald.
Yes.
Eight months.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Wolf Street between Main Street and Willow Streets.
I like the motion that we enact emergency clause. I don't need to.
We need to adopt.
Oh, adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Okay.
I have a motion to adopt in a second. End the discussion.
I just have one question that was proposed to me. What happens with the actual physical property that was the street?
It splits, by code, it splits 50-50 to the budding owners.
That's what I assumed. That's what I communicated.
Down the middle.
Any other discussion? I will call Roe, give please. Uh, Joel Williams.
Yes.
Deana Taylor.
Yes.
Brian Herring.
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Yes.
Johnny Savage.
Yes.
Brian Oswald.
Yes.
Bill Boswell.
Yes.
What motion carries?
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Some move.
For those of you that are here, this motion to adopt the emergency clause is necessary to give this immediate effect, and I know that Kim is here from the hospital, so we do need to do the emergency clause. For those of you that are here, this motion to adopt the emergency clause is necessary to give this immediate effect, and I know that Kim is here from the hospital, uh, so we do need to do the emergency clause to open the door for them to go forward with their acquisition of this property. Otherwise, it would have a delay of thirty days.
Who seconded that?
Ryan, Brown?
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause, and a second, any, any discussion on this? Voice is all right from this one? Okay, all of the favor by aye? Aye. All of the post saying? Motion.
What's our timeframe now to get the?
I'm returning Dan, Dan's.
I just released, but I have to answer that question, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I, hopefully, this was the, the last hurdle, we're on the straight stretch. I hope, uh, and I, you know, I've made a, I've made some statements in, in the past that I put dates on, hmm, I won't do that anymore. Uh, but, uh, I think, I think we're on the up and up now, I will put a date on it, she might, hopefully, on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing this service.
If, if there's any way to communicate in the future, when we get some idea of the timeframe that we're looking at, it would sure help to make some sort of notice to the public.
Well, I think we will let probably the hospital do that since they are doing it anyway, I think it'd be...
But I mean, if someone, you know, has a timeframe, hey, we're gonna start on this day, you know, we expect to take however many days, you can see that.
The best thing that would happen is, is a front page picture of dump trucks and lawyers and that stuff going wild.
Already got it planned.
I knew where that was going to, but I'm glad you understood that that is the best thing that could happen.
Well, I, I usually don't speak up, boss, but it will be better than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
Can you get your camera coming there quick?
I've no idea on that.
But you can pass on the beans, and we appreciate you, but anybody know, you know, we talk every day, don't we? I don't know, my wife's looking at my phone, you better not be talking to me. Anyway, anyway, I appreciate y'all, and thank you council for at least giving that last hurdle right to go with. Okay, let's move forward. We have with us here Mr. Brian Doyle tonight, and he's the employer's support for Garden Reserve, and he has a little presentation he'd like to give us.
Good afternoon, I'm Brian Doyle, I'm with the Employer Support Garden Reserve. Uh, we are a DOD organization that helps, uh, with the facilitate and promote a cooperative culture of employer's support for national garden reserves in the community. Uh, I was here last October and asked all the council members in order to sign a, what they call a statement of support. What this is, it, it doesn't obligate you to anything other than what you're already doing, supporting the garden reserve. I am an employer coordinator, outreach coordinator, sorry, and I help to convey what they call the USERA laws, USERA laws. And USERA is the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act that was, uh, established in nineteen seventy-two by Presidents Walcott and Bush. What that does is it protects the soldiers and the employers as well. So, if there's a deployment that comes up, guys come home, they need help getting re-employed, and go back to employers, I'm there to help them. But I'm also there to help the employer themselves, when a soldier comes back and does not want to go back to work, or finds reasons not to go back, I'm there to help step in and pave the way for a smooth transition. And what I like to do is obviously like I said, I'm here in October, and asked a lot of you guys, have already signed statements of support, uh, for the garden reserve, and I would like to ask that next council meeting, I come back and, uh, we do the same thing again.
I'm all for everything that you guys do.
Thank you, State.
We did this last council, and, and actually, Brian, I speak to my husband once in a while, and he's doing a great job, and I think our city, who's not behind the military? I think, I would be more than happy to come back with those documents, uh, to be up yellow.
Is that the motion, we're just, need to be in agreement?
Yes, just in agreement.
Your show is getting...
Yep, video, don't be late.
You got it, boss.
Do you wanna do that at committee, Brian, or do you wanna do it at a rate council meeting, at this?
Where your council meeting's fine.
Okay, so it'll be one month from now.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. I did skip old business, is anybody, anybody got any old business on right there?
I do wanna ask a question on the floor, I, how do we, how are we gonna communicate that to the general public as far as the, the baby formula?
I said that in Mr. Watch's presence, so that he and I can talk about the hospital newspaper article, I'm also gonna give it to, uh...
Can Dee somehow run it on the water bills?
We'll probably put that on next month's water bill, I'm also gonna ask Christine to put it out on the website, website as well as Facebook.
Any kind of signage at stores and Walmart, you know, around the corner?
Do y'all want a copy of that, now I've got a copy of what the CDC, that you sent that out, right?
Yes, I, I can mail that out tomorrow.
Y'all want a copy of it?
It's more of a precaution, but since we are talking about maybe something...
That's a good thing to have, that kind of stuff in class and two needs to be in the hands of, of the chief of health doctors.
Absolutely.
Care team.
Health department.
Health department.
Now the department is...
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, and I am gonna ask, uh, because our good friends, you read the spring, because, and know how the people think. Is there a lawsuit, is there a threat to the lawsuit to stop?
I have not heard of that.
I mean, it, it would not, it... I would not be surprised.
They are attempting legislative action to solve this issue. Most of you probably saw the newspaper article, probably read this one. And I don't, I don't expect, you know, it died in committee, but I don't expect the efforts to stop. Uh, one thing that we need to keep in mind is that even if, that the act is repealed, requiring us to do it, Carol Benn has signed the contract for this grant money that requires them to do that for a minimum of ten years, otherwise they have to pay back a million and a half dollars. I read that part, so.
And guess where that chart was, Jim?
Yeah, that's where you can go back to. I'm not against the four nation, it's the rest of, that we could easily get caught in a crosshairs and have...
Well, I think it probably is gonna go down to legislation, some action, whether it be no action or action, but right now, it's all flat on the western front, as you might say.
Yeah, and, and that's not a bad thing, but as, as Wade says, you know, they're trying to do for legislative action, inevitably what happens is, is they don't get what they want, and they'll turn around and do whatever they have to do to stop it. There's nothing we can do, I mean, we're, we're at the end of the, we're literally at the end of the road.
Okay, anybody else, uh, before I get into my state of the city address? Y'all, did you take a break or anything, or cup of coffee or anything like that? Okay, I will start my state of the city address. Fellow citizens, neighbors, and friends, our city is just that, our city. I'm humbly grateful for my election as mayor of Harrison, Arkansas. It is with great pleasure that I may be given the opportunity to serve our community. We have many issues, and although I will only address a few today, I want to assure you that we are working towards a common goal, making Harrison, Arkansas, a wonderful place to live. As citizens of this community, we are entitled to certain privileges. One of the most important privileges we enjoy would be that of protection. Protection comes in two forms, fire and police. The police department is integral in our community and is shown as being our largest general fund expenditure. We have hired five new police officers, three of which have been enabled by the recent tax increase. We have taken pride in our police force, for the first time in Harrison's history, will we be providing uniforms for all dispatchers and all officers. They will be uniform in uniform, as we might say. Other improvements include ten video cameras and body cameras, six being paid for by state rent, total cost eight thousand dollars. As you know, we will add the K-9 officer to protect and aid our war against drugs, also provided by the new tax. As well, a six-week handler course, total cost of this thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And finally, we will further equip our and revamp apartment with six new police vehicles, total cost of those, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This also provided by the tax. As we continue to work towards the best future for our citizens with long-range plans in the police department, we also are working on plans for the fire department. Our fire department is the second largest general fund expenditure. While looking into and working with our new fire chief, we have found, the city council has approved eight hundred and forty thousand dollars to be borrowed for the purchase of two new trucks. But there's still needs. The department's radio system is severely outdated, and there's need to update from analog system to a digital system. The improvement will clarify class and increase range for better communication. The estimated cost would be fifty thousand dollars. As you all know, fire, fire station number one is suffering from significant structural damage. We will address this issue, this issue in the budget, as quoted as station one remodel for twelve thousand dollars. Fire Chief Marvin Holt, we are proud to have you on board as we continue to train our firefighters with standards met by Little Rock, Chicago in fire and rescues, Whitewater, repelling auto extractions, and hospital calls. As neighbors, we share a common activities such as public works. Public works is under the direction of Wade Phillips. Water and sewer is working to address the problem of losing water. The survey conducted in late two thousand thirteen found an estimated hundred million gallons of water, of water leakage within the system. This issue is being researched by and overhauled to the water sewer meter, meter reading, planned water line replacement, and corrosion reduction. We will also be looking into hiring a leak specialist, as you know, for our city survey. The primary focus for wastewater treatment in two thousand fifteen will be regulatory issues regarding mineral and nutrient limit regulations in Crooked Creek. Streets and drainage, has planned projects to improve drainage in various areas of our city. Improve our sidewalks, improve traffic signals on the south side of town, as well as complete our Dry Jordan Trail project. Public Works has accomplishments such as meeting current water and sewer construction standards. Lake Harrison water line replacement, saving forty-eight to eighty-four millions of leakage per year. A concern that's been brought to my attention would be the raising of water rates. I want to ensure to people that this raise in rate is necessary to continue in our improvement for serving quality water through our community. We have replaced twenty-two hundred meters, replaced the flush truck, replaced a hundred horsepower aerator drives with variable speed drives. Did I lose anybody on that one? Improved training and certification for personnel, road widening of industrial park. Public Works is working to obtain a new billing system with a new meter project that will allow them to determine potential sources for non-billable water. Finally, because the public works department is our neighbor, the finance department is working hard to be on top of our finances. Luke Fiker is our finance director, he oversees fourteen million dollars in expenses and revenue for our great town. We need to look into investing some of these dollars for an upgrade in our technology in this department. We will look into new computers this year and next year to get where we need to be. As friends, we, we give each other assistance, support, and personal regard. We do this by networking with industries for jobs through multiple entities. We will be looking into our current workforce, and we'll, with our citizens and youth, and train, and increase more technical jobs, increasing pay for those who are qualified. This will raise morale and education in our city. I hope to encourage and set examples for our youth, encouraging further education and positive lifestyles. I will work on building relationships with our state agencies and representatives for future growth of Harrison. And lastly, we take pride together by improving the city through a beautification project. Finally, as your new mayor, I will work hard to show that we are a responsible group of leaders that strive to be fair and transparent. We work for each other, with each other, and there must be a certain respect and trust there. The money that is given by the good people of this town must be put to appropriate cost. Rest assured, your city finances are in good shape as we move forward, and I thank you very much. I have some other things to use that I put on there tonight. Hillary, won't you stand up, young lady? This is Mrs. Hillary Cleaver, and actually, I gave her the data for this, uh, presentation, and this young lady here. Now you have staff writer? Cool. We might work on that, unless you write out. Okay, also, Bill touched on it earlier, and I've had several calls, and I don't know if you've had calls too, also in, into the city concerning our street park. And, uh, I give my big thumbs up.
Absolutely. Absolutely, good.
And the old fashioned part was clear, they're the hell we got. Okay, see these two new flags, compliments of Bear Bank?
And, uh... Bear State.
Bear State, that, yeah. And I appreciate them too, also. Okay, we're down to citizens, or hold, excuse me, all, all the council, if they got anything they would like to bring in, or say, to the public. Okay, I'll open it up, does anybody in the audience would like to say anything? I'm quick, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Okay, you're, you're right, now, John Phillips Day is, uh, Monday, March sixteenth, and they're having that at the Grand Center at five-thirty. And tickets are ten dollars, and believe you me, that goes to a good scholarship cause for all the underprivileged people that wanna participate. Show up, hey up, show up. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second, okay, there. All of the favor aye? Aye.